All right, it is 6:00 PM on this May 8th. I will call this council session to order. Welcome everyone online and everyone in attendance. Nice to see the chambers with some folks in it. Ms. McKay, may we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Reed?
Here.
Mr. Dwyer?
Here.
Mr. Parrott? Mr. Yolan?
Here.
Mr. Hunter?
Here.
Mr. Hardy?
Here.
Thank you. We'll start off with the invocation which I will lead off with. You're welcome to join if inclined or not, if you're so inclined there. And then we'll do the pledge of allegiance led by Vice Mayor, Mr. Reed. All right, thank you. First item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Does anyone wish to change anything in the agenda tonight? Or do we have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Make a motion, we adopt the agenda.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Next up is the declaration of personal interest. Does anyone have a declaration of personal interest concerning any items on the agenda tonight? Not hearing any, I'll close that. Next up is a proclamation. May is being recognized by the National League of Cities as National Cities, Towns, and Villages Month. They asked that we would sign a proclamation in recognition of that, which I have done. I will read it now. "National Cities, Towns, and Villages Month. Whereas the National League of Cities was founded in 1924 in Lawrence, Kansas, as the American Municipal Association by state municipal leagues seeking more coordination and national representation as cities, towns, and villages expanded rapidly. Whereas the nonpartisan National League of Cities is the oldest and largest organization representing municipal governments throughout the United States, representing the interests of more than nineteen thousand city, towns, and villages across the country. Whereas today, the National League of Cities works in partnership with forty-nine state municipal leagues across the country to strengthen local leadership, drive innovation, and influence the federal policies that impact local programs and operations. Whereas as the voice of cities, towns, and villages in Washington DC, the National League of Cities has successfully championed federal legislative solutions that support municipalities and has worked closely with Congress and the executive branch to educate policymakers on the realities of local implementation. Whereas Farmville is a proud member of the National League of Cities and has benefited from the organization's research, technical expertise, federal advocacy, and opportunities to learn from other local governments. And whereas local governments are the bedrock of American democracy, providing three-hundred-and-thirty-six million residents with the most accountable, responsive, inclusive, ethical, and transparent government in the world. Whereas from the nation's smallest villages to its largest cities, America's local governments have been essential in transforming the United States of America into the greatest, most influential nation in world history. And whereas Farmville was first incorporated in eighteen thirty-three and is proudly served today by the mayor and town council and a municipal workforce of one-hundred-and-fifty-three dedicated public servants, now therefore be it resolved that I, Brian Vincent, the mayor of Farmville, Virginia, do hereby proclaim May twenty twenty-four as National Cities, Towns, and Villages Month in celebration of America's local governments and the National League of Cities' historic centennial anniversary." So just a recognition that local government is your immediate touchstone to democracy and a recognition of an organization that aids us in education and advocacy as we move forward. And I would be remiss if I did not mention that Vice Mayor Reed's active involvement in our state municipal league, Virginia Municipal League, was one of the catalysts for me getting involved in National League of Cities. And I have appreciated his leadership and his steadfast dedication to that education. Moving on, we will roll into public hearing, which I imagine most folks are here for. First item for public hearing is ordinance number two-two-eight amending section fifteen-one-twenty-two, fifteen-one-twenty-three, fifteen-one-twenty-seven, fifteen-one-thirty, fifteen-one-thirty-one, fifteen-one-thirty-five, and deleting sections fifteen-one-twenty-six and fifteen-one-thirty-one of Division Three of Article Three of Chapter Fifteen, Motor Vehicles and Traffic. Do we have anyone signed up for that? Ms. McKay?
No one has signed up for the ordinance number two-two-eight. But Mr. Watson and Hunter Watson and Brad Watson have signed up just to talk about the parking meter.
Right, that's the next one? Two-two-eight is the parking meter zoning. Yeah, two-two-nine is the golf cart Longwood University. So if you're here to speak to the parking meter division, which is number two-two-eight, Chapter Fifteen, then this would be the time. Do you have people signed up? Who's first? Is this like a seniority thing? Is that what just happened? Mr. Watson, if you wouldn't mind, just for the public who are watching, if you would speak into that microphone right there so folks can hear what you have to say. Yes, sir?
I'd be glad to.
And you've got three minutes, and please state your name and...
I'm Hunter Watson. I'm an irate citizen. I appreciate you allowing me to be with you tonight. I am very much opposed to changing the meters, the parking meters. I really couldn't believe my ears and eyes and the paper when I saw that you were thinking about making it a dollar rather than a quarter to park on the street and making it fifty dollars to violate it. Yesterday, just yesterday, I ate lunch down at the, what do you call it? The one down at the end of the right, on Main Street, anyway, before you get to the corner. And I put a quarter on the meter. I don't guess I stayed longer than thirty minutes, I must have though. I came out and the guy was writing a ticket, and I thought, thank goodness, I put a quarter on the meter because he was doing it for the other car. I got to my car, he had one on mine too, so I must have stayed longer than thirty minutes. I paid the ticket, I'm done. I guess I just made a mistake. But if I wanted to have a council that did everything they could to keep people from coming downtown, to wipe out downtown, what I would do is increase the parking meters a lot and make the penalty really tough. I heard you have some talk about, well, you're having trouble getting people to pay, that they don't, that some of them don't want to pay. Well, sock it to them then, do it to them. But you don't need to do it to the people who are parking on the street. When a little old lady wants to go in an embroidery shop for a few minutes and stays longer than she thought and comes out and has a fifty-dollar ticket, that's gonna be tough. And I asked some people what they thought of it, and most of them said, "I haven't heard anything about it." So they don't read the Farmville hurl much, because it was certainly right there. And I can tell you, if you make these things the law and you have people getting fifty-dollar tickets, you're gonna get some people come to see you. They'll get the attention then. I really ask you to rethink that whole thing. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Ms. McKay, who signed up next?
I had a few names that were on the public comment period that wished to speak about the parking.
Okay.
I had Brad Watson.
Good evening. I wrote it down because I had three minutes. My name's Brad Watson, and I don't live in town, so I cannot vote for or against any of you. But I am one of the owners of a building across the street, and we paid fifteen thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars in water and sewer, real estate, and beak pole taxes last year. That along with the fact that I have been in business on Main Street for over thirty years. My father's been a staple on Main Street, you just heard from, for sixty years. And so I'm hoping you'll think my thoughts and words are meaningful and sincere. Over three decades, I've served as the president of the Farmville Chamber of Commerce, on the Board of the LCVA, the Chair of the Farmville Planning Commission, Chair of the Farmville United Methodist Church Council, and Member of Centura Southside Community Hospital Board, and the Heart of Virginia Festival Board, and a leadership position at the YMCA of every kind. I currently serve as Chair of the Prince Edward County Industrial Development Authority, and have always been an advocate for Farmville, for Prince Edward County, and for this area as a whole. I heard about the town's plan to increase the parking costs from twenty-five cents to a dollar. I don't like the fact that we have to have meters, but I understand why we have meters. I don't like the fact that it goes to a dollar, but I understand why it goes to a dollar. We're in an inflationary environment, we just have to deal with it. But this plan to go from twenty-five, which moves to fifty in two weeks if you don't pay, to fifty, which moves to a hundred in two weeks if you don't pay, seems excessive. My family and I were silly enough to buy that building fifteen years ago and put a half million dollars into it when it did not have any parking. That means we have to rent parking so our employees and our patrons and our tenants have a place to park. Sometimes I park on Main Street because I have something heavy that I need to take in the office or get out. Sometimes I'm just gonna be there for a minute or two, and I forget, I get busy and I forget it, I come out and have a ticket. Well, that's my fault, I gotta deal with that. However, if one of my clients gets a fifty-dollar ticket because they stayed too long in my office, they may not want to come back, even if I do a decent job. If somebody goes to Greenfront from out of town and they get a fifty-dollar ticket, they're gonna think twice about coming back to Farmville to visit. And if they do get a ticket and they put it in the mail to pay it and it doesn't get to you in two weeks, and you know how the mail system is here in town and in Virginia, it's terrible. It's a good chance it won't get here in two weeks, then it's a hundred dollars. A week ago, I sent each of you an email about my concerns. I can't say that anybody got my email, but I did hear from the mayor and from Councilman Yolan, I appreciate it. Think about the emails and phone calls you're gonna receive if people get fifty and a hundred-dollar fines. After two, three, fifty emails, phone calls, I think you're gonna rethink what you're doing today. This plan may look good on paper, but I expect the outcome to be far from good. Not only is it overly punitive, but it says to people who come here and shop and do business that Farmville is not open for business, that it sends a message that it's not a good place to start a business, and it will not be a good place to visit. I've been a positive voice for this community for three decades, and I still will, but I'm positive this is a bad idea, and I hope that you'll not do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McKay?
I needed to clarify that Kim Boswell wanted to speak about the parking meters.
I had two things. I wanted to talk about First Avenue and the parking.
This is for the ordinance two-two-eight, the parking meters? You can come up now, you have three minutes for the parking meters.
Yes. Hello, my name is Kim Boswell. Honestly, I'll just keep this very short. My wife and I moved to Farmville thirteen years ago. We found the community invigorating. We actually rented our first house right here on the corner of Griffin and High. I believe it's six-hundred or six-oh-three. But I'm gonna tell you, we're not a tourist trap. We have never, my impression of Farmville, of being a citizen, we've never thought of our community as a tourist trap. But when you start levying fees, then we start to broach that arena. I ask that you give due consideration to that, and to be honest, that's about all that I have. I think we should vote against the change in the parking meters. I really don't care if we charge a dollar, but the punitive, especially after fifteen days, you've got the Honorable Senator Kane, you've got the Honorable Congressman Bob Good, that have gone into our post office system and said it doesn't work right now. And you want to say, you're gonna get doubled that fine in fifteen days if you don't get a ticket, give us our money back. So I think that's a little bit of an issue. And, you know, I really love this community. Let's move forward, but let's not make our home a tourist trap. It's not a way to invoke revenue. There are many ways that we can increase our revenue in this community, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Ms. McKay, anyone else signed up on number two-two-eight?
No, sir.
Mr. Romaine thinks he signed up for two-two-eight.
I signed up in the wrong place, my fault, and I definitely did not put something. That was good. Good afternoon. My name is Jake Romaine, I'm President of the Farmville Downtown Partnership, as everybody here knows, but maybe not out there. So I just wanted to convey some of the feelings of some of the local business owners downtown on the parking, the fines, which everybody before me has talked about, being a little bit excessive is the number-one concern of business owners downtown when it comes to this ordinance. So I just wanted to pass that along, since that's what we've fielded a lot of calls through our newsletter on that, emails, and phone calls. So I just wanted to make the council aware of what we've learned also. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. McKay?
No one else has signed up?
All right. I'll close that public hearing, and we'll move to the next public hearing, which is ordinance number two-two-nine, amending Article Three of Chapter Fifteen, which is operation of golf carts and utility vehicles. Do we have anyone signed up to speak on ordinance number two-two-nine? Not seeing a Shelton Foster. Anyone else signed up to speak at this time?
Hi, thank you for your time. I'm Lori Blackwood from the Longwood University Real Estate Foundation. And a few years ago, we were lucky enough to get a state-funded new facilities building. We had hoped to put that building within the triangle, but we just didn't own enough real estate to be able to do that. So it is now being built, almost coming to fruition. It's where the old lumberyard was. And that building is gonna house campus planning and construction, facilities, and housekeeping. And right now, a lot of those departments are spread out on campus throughout academic buildings. So this new building is gonna be able to bring those departments together under one roof and also free up more academic space. And I know that one of the things that we had requested and hoping that this council will consider is for our staff with a very specific route to be able to cross solely Main Street at the McDonald's back and forth so they can carry their equipment and tools and so forth back and forth to campus to handle work orders and things like that. And that we so much appreciate. If the town considers this ordinance and approves it, it will help us be much more efficient, also free up more academic space. And the current building that Facilities is in right now, that's gonna be demoed and become our new performing arts center over the next several years. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Ms. McKay, anyone else signed up on two-two-nine?
No, sir.
All right, we will close public hearing on ordinance number two-two-nine, which brings us to public comment period. Do we have anyone signed up for the public comment period?
Hello, lady and gentleman. My name is Anastasia Cypher. I'm the President of the Cypher's Foundation, and I'm owning some buildings on the Main Street. And we are preparing for the opening of a new facade. We are working on making it a little bit more beautiful, our downtown. So I would like to invite you in person to visit our open house that will be on the twenty-third of May very soon. So I have invitation, I can leave them, and we will be very glad to see you that day. So we could discuss maybe some other innovations. We are very open to cooperation and with Downtown Partnership and other organizations, and we appreciate that cooperation and any of your suggestions. Or maybe we could discuss the opportunity, like, to open in the first Farmville Business Center, and that could work, like, in a good way for the reputation of our town. So this is something that we could discuss and have, like, nice time, have a drink and some snack, and just, you know, just have a good time with community. This is the first thing that I would like to tell. And the second one, so I was presenting the project to Mayor Vincent and to Scott Davis about USAID, it's International Agency of United States. It's one of the largest foundations, one of the biggest foundations of the United States that doing a lot of cooperation work around the world and making a real impact on rising economics and educational projects and raising the capacity of different nations for cooperation, peace building, and so on. So there is a letter on consideration on Mayor Vincent to cooperate with this project, and they propose this time, so they have very different directions and the projects and grant opportunities for the cities and for the towns, but one of them is to make sister cities with Ukraine. I'm Ukrainian, and Ukrainian people appreciate support of American people a lot. And one of this project could be cooperation for Farmville with some city or town that you will choose, like, for changing the experience of the best practices in Farmville and maybe some other city or another cities and towns from Europe. And there are projects like for conferences, seminars, study trips, so we can go to Europe or they can come here and just share experience and bring some ideas, you know, to each other. There's always a lot of good things to share. So I really hope that that will be interesting for you and you could be a partner. It will not take much time for you, but this is really matters for cooperation with Europe. And of course, Farmville now is my heart and my town that I live in, that I love so much, and I love the community and people here. So I think everybody will benefit from that. So this information I will leave to, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. McKay, do we have anyone else signed up for public comment?
Good evening. I don't know if you guys remember me when I was here a little over a year ago in January twenty twenty-three, to explain to you what better days Farmville was. And if any of you missed that or forgot, we have the simple mission to ensure that no child in Southside, Virginia sleeps without their own bed, and that every home is a functional and conducive home for the well-being of Southside, Virginia. When I came in January of twenty twenty-three, we had helped thirty families and put almost seventy children in beds, as of today. And just, what is that? I don't know. I'm not messing up my thing. We are now at a hundred and seventy families and almost three hundred and seventy children in beds. Now, that is across seven counties, but that's because the town of Farmville is the heart of Virginia. And we, you know, we just are. And what we didn't really anticipate is that we have walked lockstep in those families that we've served. Storage has been a problem the whole time. We've had a lack of rentals, prices have doubled overnight, property has been sold to outsider invisible corporations that are disinterested in what we are doing in our local community. We just lost our rental space again last month and would be homeless on the twenty-fourth of this month, except for someone who doesn't want credit happened to be in exactly the right place at the right time, which is what our organization often does for people. So tonight, you are voting to allow us to lease what was the former Faces Building. I cannot explain to you the game changer that that is, least of which, we have been offered two hundred and seventeen twin mattresses by Longwood on June third. We can't take those mattresses without your all's help with this building, but that's two hundred and seventeen more children that are gonna sleep in beds. And as a former school teacher, I can tell you that that changes, that changes our school system too. So I am thrilled to be here tonight, I am thrilled to watch this be adopted, and I just wanted to really thank you all for helping us continue our mission. Thanks, bye.
Thank you. Ms. McKay?
Kim Boswell, did you...
Hi, just wanted to come up and touch base with, for lack of a better word, Highway First Avenue. We really, number one, I appreciate the efforts to slow people down on Griffin. We need to. Our college family is there, and that is very important to us. I want you to start to look at the avenues, and you'll see that there are many new families with young children. And I can tell you that walking down First Avenue in the mornings, you can come across cars that are doing forty miles an hour. Someone's gonna get hurt. My suggestion, and it's just a suggestion, is actually to put stop signs, four-way stop signs. I think it would end up being like three sets on First and Second Avenues, at least where you have four-way intersections. Putting something there to slow traffic down, it would be a start. Having police officers sit in the middle of the avenues to hand out tickets, I don't think that would work. But I think putting stop signs, making signage that says this process is changing would be a benefit to the community. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. McKay?
No one else has signed up?
What was your name, sir? Hey, I'm Heinz Jones. I'm on the sheet. Is that okay? Cool, thanks so much. I'm Heinz Jones, nice to meet everyone, thanks for allowing us to have this opportunity to speak. My wife and I purchased the Farmville Mill Building about two years ago over on One Mill Street. I'm sure everyone here is familiar with it, it's quite an iconic slash historical landmark. And what a cool building, am I right? I mean, it's right downtown, right on the trail, right on the Upp Matix River. It's got a really weird hundred-foot silo that just is there for some reason. Architecturally interesting, historically interesting, agriculturally valid. And we've put together a really awesome plan to revitalize and renovate that property. Architecturally interesting, historically interesting, agriculturally valid. And we've put together a really awesome plan to revitalize and renovate that property to make it into something that is a place for the community. That would be a mixed-use kind of retail, right on the trail, possibly residential. Really cool property that it would put a mark on downtown Farmville for the better. So, instead of having a building that is bordering blightedness and vacancy, it will be something that would be hopefully celebrated and something that will be talked about, something that would draw in tourists, customers alike. And so, already, the prior owner was running a small venue on the property, and that's kind of our background, is in the weddings and events industry. And so, we've sort of picked the pace up on that a little bit. And we actually had a wedding on Saturday. It was fantastic. I have some pictures I'd love to share with you guys at some point. The reason I am going on and on about this, three minutes feels like a lot, actually, now that I'm up here, but the point being is there's a magical fund out there in the world called the DHCD-IRF Grant. It is the Industrial Revitalization Fund by the Department of Housing and Community Development of the state of Virginia. I would like to get that grant because it would really help us escalate our project and bring awesomeness in a quicker pace to this awesome building. The reason I'm even bringing that up here, and it's kind of a little bit maybe backwards, is because I don't know how the processing of this whole thing works. And it was recommended that I maybe stop in and say hi to you guys and kind of introduce the idea that I would like to have the town sponsor our project. We do need a locality sponsor, and the ideal sponsor would be the town of Farmville. I say, why not? I'm gonna do all the work, not asking for any money from you or time. We've got it all dialed in, and we're really ready to submit. The due date is May 31st. That's the catch. I know it's kind of tight, but anything that I officially need from you can be gathered after that date. All I really need before May 31st is a thumbs up. Thank you so much. Farmville Mill.
No one else has signed up?
No one else signed up, okay. I will close the public comment period, and we will move into the consent agenda. Do we have anyone who wishes to change anything in the consent agenda, or do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. Next up is the finance report. Ms. Julie Moore, what you got for us tonight?
Good evening. You have the April finance report in front of you. For the ABM project, we earned $16,606 for the month of April. And again, this will go towards making the payments on the ABM project. For the other investments we have at VIP, we made $16,003. So, so far for this fiscal year, we've made $162,710 at VIP. We earned $21,638 through our SREP account at Benchmark. So, so far this year, we've earned $176,196 through the Benchmark accounts. And then we earned $33,794 through LGIP. So, that brings our total for the year at $358,486 for LGIP. So, for the month of April, we earned $71,435 excluding the ABM. And then you also got an additional report this time, and that was the retail sales report for the calendar year 2023. Overall, we had a very small growth, but considering inflation and interest rates and all of that, it's still a positive that we were trending up slightly. Any questions?
Do we have any questions for Ms. Moore at this time? Not hearing any. Thank you. Yeah, who gets to do the trumpeting?
Can I add? She won't, she won't toot her own horn. I would like to acknowledge all of our, actually, it's all of our staff have to do the right thing when they are purchasing through our purchasing guidelines, and everything goes into our overall financial audit. And at the end of our audit, we submitted again this year to the GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association, for the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting, which is the highest recognition that you can get for a governmental entity. And I'm happy to announce that we found out today and thank Ms. Moore and her staff and all the, all the team that follow all the guidelines that we set out, that we've gotten our second certificate this year. And so, last year was our first, this is our second, and we hope that it will, our intentions are we to get it every year. But I just want to thank the staff, and it's, it's a really good honor to have that for the town of Farmville.
Absolutely. Congratulations on once again securing that achievement. I know that there's a lot of hard work put into it, but it also gives a great sense of confidence to know that you're being recognized for, for that financial reporting, because it's the bedrock of what we do here as far as being able to, to afford the services and the lifestyle that our constituents have been accustomed to. So, we appreciate it very much. Second year in a row, very cool. Keep moving forward. Next item, oh, well, we have to adopt the finance report as presented. Do I hear a motion to adopt the finance report as presented? Motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it. All right, we'll roll into old business. Old business, we had public hearings on the town budget for FY 2024, 2025, and the CIP. And so, first up on the old business is request adoption of resolution number 22, or 2024-0401 FY 2024, 2025 Town Budget. Do I hear a motion to adopt that resolution as presented?
I'll make a motion, we adopt a resolution number 2024-0401 Fiscal Year 2425 Town Budget.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion on the town budget this time? Not hearing any. Ms. McKay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Yolan?
Yes.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Next up is request adoption of resolution number 2024-0402, the five-year capital improvement plan. Do I hear a motion to adopt the CIP as presented?
I move the request adoption of resolution number 2024-04-02, five-year capital improvement plan.
Motion and second. Any discussion at this time? Ms. McKay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Yolan?
Yes.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Next item is request approval for additional services for Farmville Asset Management Inventory. Mr. Davis, do you have any additional info for us on this?
No, I just want to ask you to recall, when we did this at our last retreat, we talked about having a, an asset management plan for our water and sewer infrastructure, which this is what this is for, that we can properly know exactly the locations and the age of pipe, fire hydrants, all of those things. And Hurt and Profit won the bid. If you remember from my retreat, the, the number that our individuals told us that that probably would cost us was about $250,000. Hurt and Profit came in well below that, but they thought we had a lot more information than we could do, which I knew we didn't have. So, that price is getting closer to that $250,000 for the work that they'll need to do to finish that plan for us. When it's done, it'll be a game changer for us because it'll be all on our GIS system, all the information. It'll also allow us to know when we change something, we, we can update it to when that was installed, where it was installed, and have better record-keeping of all of that in our infrastructure, that we can pre-plan ahead of time in the CIP for those types of things ahead of time.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. And for the, the public, this does stem from the council retreat we held after the last election, and we decided with the ARPA funds that we were given that we would contribute roughly around 8% to sort of above-ground amenities that were splashy, AKA like a splash pad. And then the rest of that money, we would try to file away and dig into some of our really important sort of water and sewer infrastructure that is aging and get a better read on where those systems are. And this, this is part and parcel with that. Do I hear a motion to approve for additional services for the Farmville Asset Management Inventory?
So move.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion on the asset management inventory? Not hearing any. Ms. McKay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Yolan?
Yes.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Now, we are into new business, and for what I anticipate most folks are hanging out for, we will get to request adoption of ordinance number 228, Chapter 15, amending parking meter division. I will say that the, the meter component of the jump to a dollar an hour was something that was passed previously by this council when we agreed to the ABM project on the efficiency and improvement of our parking and water meters. So, that, that is a go at this time. What is on the table is in relation to those fines of which most folks spoke about. So, at this time, I would open the floor for a discussion or motion on the parking meter division.
Well, I'll start it off. I don't mind admitting, I've had some angst about, and some feedback from different folks in town on the magnitude of the hike. I think we should have an increase, I think, and this should be closer to the 30 to the $35 fine, doubling that for any late, whatever 15 days was. I'd be comfortable at either one of those points. 30, I think, would be very friendly.
Yes. I understand what Mr. Watson was saying in reference to the mail and the turnaround, because I have several packages that, they even said they delivered on Amazon, but just not there. And that's a small point, I know, but I think we do need to look at the time limit, though. It's just like when you get a speeding ticket, how much time do you have to pay it before the court date? It's not 15 days. I think it's a little longer than that. So, I do think we need to revisit the time limit on the fine, and I have no problem with reducing the amount, but we still need to come up with something that they're gonna pay attention to, because on the other side, that you all are not hearing, is the fact that people are saying, they come downtown, they're tired of riding the block and not having a place to park, they see the same old vehicles, and nothing's being done. So, we do have that to look at in reference to the parking as well.
Mr. Davis, just as a pointed question, since it was raised, I know that if the council were to adjust the fine lower, no change to the, we would not have to reissue a public hearing. If it went higher, you would, but lower, we would not. What about adjusting the penalty timeframe? Would that entail another public hearing?
If, if you, whatever, if, when you do a public hearing and you have a draft ordinance in, in front of you, you can always do less than what's been advertised, but you can enhance what's there without another public hearing. You've got to give people another chance if you're gonna enhance what you've advertised. If you decrease it, that's traditionally to their good, but if you enhance it more, then they should have, they're supposed to have the opportunity to have comment.
Is it from, that they have to have it postmarked within the timeframe? Because I think that would be reasonable, but not have to be received by the time period, 15-day time period. In my business, as long as something, we have a date when, an application for a home, as an example, as long as it's postmarked by the application date, that's fine with us. I think that would be more fair.
I still think it should be 30 days, though.
It...
Any bill you get in the mail, you have at least that time span to pay it before it jumps up.
It, it just states, "The failure of each owner to make such payment to the, to the finance office within 15 days of the time when such notice was attached to such vehicle shall render such owner subject to the penalties provided." I don't know if Julie can answer this. Do most people pay, call and pay by credit card, or do you receive by mail? Just curious. Okay. So, if it's in person, they're local?
Well, I would expect that in person, yeah, I get that, but then they also have to find a spot on Main Street to park to come in and pay it.
Can, can I just clarify some things, just to remind everybody here, and then also for the public that might not have been here or heard other than what the article was? From a standpoint, and I, I think I can speak for the chief, th, this isn't, this isn't anything that we're trying to generate more revenue or we're trying to, anything other than, I think, someone spoke to this a few minutes ago about Mr. Hunter riding, looking for a parking spot, is that there are those that do not follow the law that's in this of a minimum of a two, two-hour period. And a lot of them are business owners on Main Street. And others are that they don't want to pay 25 cents or whatever, that then, you know, a $25 ticket, I'll take my chances on getting a $25 ticket. This was, and to be a, a method of, I don't want a $50 ticket, so I'm gonna pay the meter instead of not paying the meter. At the end of the day, you can leave personally or even from a professional standpoint, you can leave it as it is and as it was. We do have to change some language. And to be honest, I mean, I don't, I don't care if you have parking meters on Main Street. That is totally up to you all, but that conversation's been had here before of whether we have meters, we don't have meters. The part about going backwards, may or a little bit, the dollar part is because we're getting new parking meters that allow for to pay by credit card or pay by app. 25 cents for 30 minutes is not gonna pay the cost of that or the associated fees, so... And I don't know anywhere in today's time that you can go park for 25 cents anywhere. We're already behind times on, on what we charge to, to park on the street. Mr. Dwyer said 30, 35. I looked at, I tried to find some college towns after I had some phone calls from all of you. The one that stood out to me, granted, much larger, much more populated, Blacksburgs is $35 penalty if you don't pay for the parking. So, I, I just wanted to, to clarify some of that. This isn't about revenue generation at all. Out of a $15.5 million budget, we made $30,634 last year on parking fines. It's not gonna break the budget if it goes away totally, but there's gotta be a recourse for somebody that breaks the law, just like anything else. Thank you.
Can't talk about removing... Can't talk about removing parking meters without talking about bike lanes, so let's not get into that subject. I will say, you know, tech does cost money, yes. And, and there, it was some reticence on my part in the doubling, right? Because anytime you have a doubling like that, there's a natural perception that's going to happen. There's a feel to that. There's an emotional reaction to it. And whether or not you're saying that you want to penalize folks who are coming from out of town or not, there, there's going to be a perception that maybe you are. In the past, we have taken issues like this and sent them back to committee to be reworked. If you are up for it, I would say we send this back to work session to be reworked next month. Is everybody comfortable with that? I don't think we need a motion to do that. We need a motion to take, send it back to work session next month.
I'll make a motion. Send it back to work session to work on the fees.
Second, second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? As have it. All right. Live to fight another day. Next up is, and I do want to say, if everybody, because some of y'all may roll out, thank you for coming today. Thank you for participating. It really does mean a lot to see faces come in here and, and speak on issues. We appreciate it. Next up is adoption of ordinance number 229, Golf Cart Longwood University. We have a motion on the floor regarding Golf Cart Longwood University.
I make a motion. We adopt the ordinance number 229 for Golf Cart Longwood University with the changes that we did.
I'll second that.
Motion and second. Any discussion at this time?
I just have one comment. When I was campaigning this year, there was a resident who had requested that we talk about the fact that he had a kind of glamorized cart. I don't think that was a good idea personally. And I think that, you know, this is an exception that I believe we need to make in this case, because it's going to be a very short crossing in a golf cart that's going to be well-lit with flashing lights, crossing in the twenty-five mile-an-hour zone, as opposed to maybe other speed limits in town of Farmville. So whereas I kind of understand this resident's desire to kind of be able to cruise around, that's kind of a leisure use for somebody who probably has other vehicles. So I personally think it's, it's, it's reasonable, a reasonable request.
Any other discussion at this time? Not hearing any. Ms. McKay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Harding?
Yes.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Yolan?
Yes.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Next up is approval of plat of subdivision survey on Plank Road. Mr. Davis, do you have any additional info for us here?
Mayor, I think you have the staff report. It meets all of our requirements. The, the zoning code just states that if it's more than one parcel, that the council has to approve the subdivision. And we would recommend passage of it.
Do I hear a motion to approve the plat of subdivision on Plank Road?
I make a motion to, that we approve the plat of subdivision survey, Henry Roulette, Plank Road.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion at this time? Not hearing any. Ms. McKay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Yolan?
Yes.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Harding?
Yes.
The motion passes.
All right. Next up is the Resolution Number 2024-0501, New Delinquent Meals Tax Policy. And this is not a tax increase, just a new tax policy, correct, Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir. I mean, the, the ordinance isn't changing that allows us to collect meals tax, or the rate of the meals tax. This is an internal policy of how we go about if people don't pay, the process of us, of the staff calling, emailing, then after that, another step to eventually getting a warrant out for not paying, if it really has to go that far.
There, there are multiple steps in which people are calling, reaching out.
Correct.
Who gets to do the phone call?
I guess whoever gets the, assigned that day, the, the duty of that task. Just curious.
Do I hear any discussion or motion on Resolution Number 2024-0501, the new delinquent meals tax policy?
I request adoption of Resolution Number 2024-0501, New Delinquent Meals Tax Policy.
Second.
Motion and second. Any additional discussion at this time? Not hearing any. Ms. McKay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Yolan?
Yes.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Harding?
Yes.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. We are up to Resolution Number 22, or 2024-0502, revised scope for South Main Street, Griffin Boulevard, the Green Tea intersection, which we had a discussion on at work session concerning the viability of that Green Tea and then a alternative intersection. Mr. Davis, you got any additional info for us here?
This is in line with what, if we didn't do the Green Tea, that we would do the conventional method, and it's spelled out of, of what that entails. And so this was provided by VDOT to meet their requirements to change the scope, but within the, the specified funding of the original smart-scale approval.
So, yeah, we're looking at whether or not we're going to go to the alternative, which still would fit within that scope and funding, if not, would be scrapping it and going through the, the song and dance again, and stretching it out to probably twenty, thirty-three, maybe somewhere around there. What is the, what's the pleasure of counsel on Resolution Number 2024-0502? Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion. We adopt Resolution Number 2024-0502, revise the scope for the South Main Street and Griffin Boulevard intersection improvement project.
Second.
Motion and second. Any additional discussion at this time? Not hearing any. Ms. McKay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Yolan?
Yes.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Harding?
Yes.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
The motion passes.
All right. And what may be the most joy-filled one, save for the end here, request approval of property lease with Better Days, South Side, Virginia. Do we have a motion on the floor? Do you have any additional information before we roll into that, Mr. Davis?
No, I'd just like to give credit to Councilman Parrott for bringing this up to me, to ask me to look into it. He had had some contact with this organization and knew the troubles that they were having in finding spaces. And, you know, it's, luckily, we have one, one place left that we don't use. And that is the old Wilson Oil Building, as most of you call it. It wasn't that when I got here, but it was Faces when I got here. And they are, you know, they're aware of, of that if we do get a flood, that, that's a chance. But I think...
...
But the, but the, the rent's good, you know? The rent is, all they got to do is pay the water and sewer bill and the electric bill. Kind of like, this is the same lease we did for Habitat for Humanity at another building that we own near Wilkes Lake. So can't beat, you can't beat the lease on this for, for a nonprofit organization like that.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the property lease with Better Days, South Side, Virginia.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion at this time? We'll say, as we all know, Councilman Parrott can be a prickly parrot, but he's got a soft spot in his heart. And so we appreciate him doing this. Roll call, vote, Ms. McKay.
Mr. Yolan?
Yes.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Harding?
Yes.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
The motion passes.
All right. You have a home.
Friday.
Next item on the agenda is the Town Manager's Report. Mr. Davis?
I only have about twenty items, so bear with me. I have the results of our spring cleanup that Mr. Atkins gave me today. Total collection of thirty-six-point-four-three tons of trash. So appreciate their efforts of, and his staff for doing this twice a year and helping the citizens get rid of things that they might not normally get rid of. And, and, and so I appreciate that. Splash pad update. They were supposed to pour concrete, well, I thought it was last week, but they couldn't get it in. So it's going to be next week. And the slab for the pump room, so fingers crossed, it should open in June. Some updates about the water and wastewater plant. The water plant, our elevator project is finishing up. And we're getting ready to start on one of the, another item that you all approved way back at the beginning, almost, of ARPA funding, and that is for a new potassium permanganate tank to, to, to help with the treatment of our water and a better method. We already have to do that, but it, it's, I don't know the exact science to it, but this will allow it to sit and be a longer and better for us. We're still working with the engineer on converting from chlorine gas at the water and wastewater to a liquid. So we hope to have some more information soon. One of the things that came out of the initial was that the, the floor not, might need to be, at the water plant, stabilized a little bit better for the weight of the liquid compared to, obviously, gas. So they're still working on that. As you all know, commencement ceremonies will be happening this weekend and next weekend. So the town should be busy and full of people. So smile and wave at them, so they'll come back. Having some water issues getting into Town Hall in the basement hallway, it's happening more frequently. It, it used to happen when, you know, we had a lot of rain and you might get a little bit of water. It seems that we're getting more, I guess, traden- tr- tr- yes, that word, rain. And so we're going to look at cutting some of that vegetation back around the building and then installing a drain of some type to help that water to where it doesn't get into underneath the foundation. So we'll be working on that in the near future. I'll need to bring to June work session an approval of a MOU, Memorandum of Understanding with the county as we move forward with the radio system upgrades. So I'll have that shared with you and talk about, and get your approval for that. Should have results from the architect, well, at least another, we're, Daniel and I are meeting with him next week about the fire station. And hopefully, not long after that meeting, we'll have some, some true numbers of what that might look like to, in the future of having true bunk rooms, adequate shower and bed, bathroom areas for both men and women, and, and, and spaces that are not there right now for the, the fire department that we're building out. Last, but not least, two things I want to share with you all. Next week, May the 12th through the 18th, is National Police Week, with May the 15th being Peace Officers Memorial Day. And that was signed into law, just so everybody's aware, by President Kennedy in October the 1st, 1962, to make sure that those people that have given that sacrifice are remembered properly. And then the following week, we get to celebrate National Public Works Week. So everybody bring in some goodies to the National Public Works Week on May the 19th through the 25th. And just want to say, for both of those, you know, half of our, probably, almost half of our employee base is, is, is in those two areas. And so really appreciate the work that they do on a daily basis for our community and the recognition that is done nationally for, for those groups are, are deserved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. I'll go around the table per normal with comments from council. Mr. Harding?
I do want to say thanks to everybody for coming. It really does, like he said earlier, it really means a lot when people show up and are involved and have, they, they have their say. And when they say what they feel and need, sometimes we respond.
Mr. Hunter?
And we don't purposely put an issue out there just to get you all to come, but it is lonely in here sometimes.
Mr. Yolan?
I'd like to direct this comment to the Town Manager. Are you purposely growing the hair longer as a dare for us to raise the money to take it down a notch, maybe?
I am not cutting it, so that it'd be very fruitful when we do get to the ten thousand and I'll be bald.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yeah, I just wanted to pitch about the Police Academy. I was about halfway in, and I asked a question of the officer. I said, well, you know, when, when did you get the badge and that kind of stuff? To my dismay, it was the Citizens Police Academy. And in all seriousness, there were only thirteen of the twenty slots filled. And I can't tell you how much I enjoyed it, how much I learned, how respectful the officers are of us in the class, but also of the citizenry. It's, they are remarkable. There's two officers now, Officer Chris and Officer Sammy. I feel comfortable calling by first name, unless they pull me over, and I'll probably use the last name. But, sir, please consider signing up. I'm sure when the next time will be by guarantee, that you'll think it's worth your while. Thanks, Chief.
Mr. Reed?
I just want to commend the Finance Department and really all the departments for the great job they're doing.
Mrs. Amos?
I'm very glad that Better Days found a building. That's wonderful. And thank you for the work you do. It's wonderful. And you, you hit the nail on the head about Tommy. That's, thank you, Scott, for finding a building for them. That's wonderful.
All right. I'll close out. Just got back today from Washington, DC with the collective of a hundred and fifty agency heads, congressional leaders, and CEOs from across the outdoor recreation industry space. And it was an opportunity for that industry to be recognized for the one trillion dollars it contributes to the US economy, which is a huge amount. And it's something that I know for us here in Farmville, we celebrate often, is the outdoor recreational opportunities we have here and how it brings people to town. Having the High Bridge Trail float right through the middle of downtown is a true gift. And I want to celebrate the people who had the foresight to make that happen. But I will say that what was refreshing was resoundingly, there is an appetite for decency in politics. And there's a hunger and a, and a deep desire for that to be represented in our politics. And so I would, one, like to commend everyone who came in today and spoke and participated in democracy, played their part and did so respectfully, although forcefully at times, and that's, that is always welcome. But it's deeply appreciated that you came to participate tonight. And I would also like to extend my appreciation to my compatriots up here on the dais who operate with that same level of decency in our operations and how much I appreciate it. With that said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
One more thing, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If I could. The gentleman hines about the mill. If, if I could, the gentleman hines about the mill. Can we get the town manager to speak with him in reference to how it works, and so he doesn't feel like we just shunned him?
Yes, that was going to be a conversation tomorrow, but, yeah, thank you for bringing it back up.
I already have a meeting with him on Friday. We're, we're scheduled to meet. Going through the IRF process with FDP, the, the town's ultimately responsible. The town gets the money, we have to, there's, there's a lot to that, other than just, we're sponsoring it. It, it, there's a lot more to that, and that's a short period of time, so I'm having a conversation with him Friday. We, we did that over a course of six months or more. This is less than three weeks.
You are, you are meeting with him, so that will be, he'll get his chance to have audience, but, yeah, I think it, it'll be a tight turnaround on something to, of that magnitude.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I just wanted to make sure if he's going to meet with him, and let him know the process that we have, but I didn't know you had a meeting.
Yeah, I've got a, I've got a meeting with him Friday, and I told him that it, I, I would need approval from you all, and you all understand what the town is getting into, and we can't do that tonight, and it'll be passed to May thirty-one deadline.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments at this time? Not hearing any. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you for coming out, meeting and adjourned.